Call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the April 3rd County Commission meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white folder. And if you need a listening device, Craig is here in the front and he can help you with that. That will move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the commission meeting minutes from March 27th, 2018. All those in favor?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, sorry. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $682,837.64. Is there a motion?
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments?
Madam Chair, a couple of bills of note today. We have 188,000 going to Metro Communications 911. That's, then we have another 80,000 going to Armor Correctional, which is a medical provider at our jail.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. We have a motion as second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is the Minnehaw County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for February 2018, and that's on file with the auditor's report. Item number five is personnel. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel action. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Second, are there any questions on that? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is recognize significant employee anniversaries for 2018. Good morning, Jen.
Good morning, Jen Ottes from Human Resources. We have a bunch of anniversaries this month. With five years of service, we have Julie Person. She's a senior property tech in our equalization office. In our jail, we have Ian Graham, who's a correctional officer, Eric Schmidt, who's a corporal, and Tyler Maury, who is also a correctional officer. In Human Resources, Tiffany Willert has five years of service with us. And then Joseph Zilla from JDC is a juvenile correctional officer. He also has five years of service. Celebrating 10 years this year is Lori McGee, who is a CSO at the jail, Calvin Castner, who is a CO at the jail, and Wally Winia, who is an air guard security officer, too, out of the air guard. 15 years of service in the jail this year is Deb Hendrick. She's an administrative clerk. 25 years of service this year is Angela Belfi. She's a corporal at the jail. Jason Gierman, who is a captain at the sheriff's office. And seated right over there. Michelle Boyd, who is of course our chief deputy at the sheriff's office. 35 years of service. We have Diane Repkama. She is of course the director of equalization. And 40 years of service, Lynn Krell, who is also here with us today. She is the assistant director at JDC.
That is an impressive amount of people and an impressive number of years. You add those all up, but thank you Lynn for being here 40 years. That's pretty amazing. Same with you, Jason. I don't think we have anybody, I don't think, I don't see Diane in here either. Oh, there she is. She's here too, so we have some-
Stand up Diane. You look so much.
And we had Jason waved and we had Lynn.
And Julie Person is in the back as well.
And Julie, thank you. Thank you all, and thank you for stopping in the commission meeting and thank you for your recognition of the years that you've put into us. So, that will move on to the next one, which is item C is record volunteers in county departments for March 2018.
Another great month for volunteers with the county. We had 281 people who volunteered their time in various county departments, including the Sulan Heritage Museums, JDC, Human Services Office or Department, Public Defenders, State's Sheriff's Office, Emergency Management, the jail, and also at Safe Home. So, thanks very much to those people who gave their time and hours to help us out here at the county.
Yep. And thank you to the volunteers. It's impressive the amount of people that work for us.
Absolutely.
Without being paid.
So, thank you.
Item number six is abatements, recommendations for approval. Olivia, item A is the city of Sioux Falls.
Yes, A through C are all for the city of Sioux Falls 2017 property taxes, tax exempt status. The first one is RDID 12980 in the amount of $1,881.37. Then we have RDID 14391 in the amount of $110.42. And RDID 14393 in the amount of $561.8.
Is there a motion for those abatements? Thank you.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number D is another property tax. Olivia?
This will be Monica.
Oh, Monica, sorry. Good morning.
Hi, this is the abatement for Shaw Roth, RDI ID 86828. This was deferred from March 13th, 2018 regarding owner occupied. We recommend a denial.
Commission, comments, questions? This was somebody who missed the deadline for owner occupied?
What it was is they had lived, and I believe it was Parker, for 14 years they had owner occupied. They moved to Sioux Falls and built the home and did not apply.
Yeah. So it's a missed application. Commissioner Benner?
I know that, I'm the one that brought this up last time and asked for a deferral. I have a concern that frankly, the notifications that we send out aren't confirmed or certified mail. And I know that's maybe a mute point at this point, but I can't believe that anybody would purposely not do this, to be honest. There's no benefit to not filling out the form correctly. And because the fact that I have some concerns about the delivery process and the fact that I don't see any reason why anybody would not do an owner occupied status.
If we don't have an application, we have to.
I understand that.
Deny it.
So, I'm not going to support your denial.
Is that a motion?
Waiting for a few more comments.
Yeah, I would just like to state, we receive about 4,000 applications every year. And we, in, into January, beginning in February, we do send out reminders. This year, we sent out 1,100. So if we did do it by certified mail, it would be very costly.
I agree with you. And only having one mistake of the number that you send out is pretty remote, but there's still in my mind, no reason for us to support that denial because of the fact that I think the system has some responsibilities. This looks like a project this morning.
This is Mary Zade from the auditor's office. I'm the property tax administrator. And I was, as I was thinking of this last night, I was, recalled the fact that the equalization office does send out equalization notices beginning of every year. And that's everyone's notification, so that they know what their value and what their property is going to be classed at. Is that correct? For the following year?
It has the abstract class, but it doesn't really have the owner occupied. The owner occupied is on the actual tax form that you get.
So that when people get this, they should, this is their chance to look at it and see if it looks correct or if they have some questions.
And I would bet if I surveyed everybody in this room and asked them if they saw an owner occupied status, because I know there's one person for sure that doesn't. I look at the total and that's it.
Commissioner Karski?
Just question from your offices. I mean, this isn't something you have to do every year. You do it one time when you move into your property. So, I mean, if you're not used to it, I get it. But how many opportunities do your offices give a person or reminders to do this? I mean, is it just a one-off, you get a letter and, and that's it?
We do supply the information to the media, so it is all supplied there. And this is a state program. So actually, we send out those reminders as courtesy.
You send them a reminder in the mail?
Yes.
Is what we do.
Yes.
A lot of people will state that they get three by the time it's all done.
Three times? Three reminders?
And by law, I mean, we have to deny this.
Okay.
You know, but it's up to you what-
By law, you have to. It's up to us to decide if we want to uphold that denial.
Exactly.
Okay.
They have to bring us the information. We get to make the decision, so. Any other comments or questions?
I would add one other thing, if I may. And that is that the city of Sioux Falls has to agree with, these abatements have to go to all the taxing entities affected, the municipalities and the counties. If there's a municipality that's affected, this one has gone to the city of Sioux Falls. They have agreed, concurred with the denial of the equalization office. So now, if you go against the two denials, I believe the state's attorney could address this, that it has to go back to the city.
That's correct.
So if you deny, if you go against the denial that has been recommended, it goes back to the city.
That's correct.
So it gets to be a process.
Still give me one reason why someone would not check an owner occupied status.
Like I said, by law, we have to deny this.
Besides by law.
Whatever you want to do is up to you.
I've figured that out. But the other piece of it, sending it to the media, I don't think there's that many people that pay atten, hope there's not too many of them here, that pay attention to all the things that they get by newspaper and minutes and all those kinds of things, because-
Right. It's also done at closing time.
I understand.
And this is a unique case where they purchased the land, then they built their own house. So, you know, maybe they didn't go through a title company.
That's possible.
Commissioner Barth, oh, Commissioner Benner?
I am, I am going to support providing grace to these folks because I, for the reason that you just stated, that I think that nobody who is, who was processing and thinking about this would choose not to, it's just free money, basically. But at the same time, I do think that you guys have provided a good case that we are trying, you know, arguably, I mean, most of the time ignorance of the law is no excuse. And so, I don't want this to be some kind of free-for-all out there that people think that they don't have to do what they're supposed to do because we're just going to provide forgiveness all the time. But this is, you know, you don't bring these very often. This is some unique circumstances. And, you know, for that reason, I mean, in this day and age, you can provide unlimited information, and sometimes that is the problem itself, that there's so much information that people choose not to look at any of it because it gets so overwhelming. But in this particular situation, I would support granting the abatement.
I just want to make, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
One more comment. I'm not blaming you for the pro, the process or the law or any of that. I just don't see any reason why someone would not do it. And frankly, if we can enhance the process, fine. But if we can't, if it's too expensive, I understand that, too, if we only got one. But I still am not going to be able to support your recommendation.
Well, I do support the recommendation, and I'll say that I've seen this happen before. And it was previously also people that built their own home. Now, they may know a lot about plumbing and they may know a lot about electrical wiring. These people previously had a homeowner's exemption down in Turner County. The fact that they didn't work with a contractor who would remind them of this, didn't work with a realtor who would remind them of this, didn't work with a title company that would remind them of this, they knew all about it. They knew all about it, except they didn't. And now they're asking us to forgive them some thousands of dollars. I say, you know, it's amateur hour, and yet these people had the information and chose not to do it. And I've, like I said, I've seen it happen a couple of times, and it's been people that built their own homes. I, I support the rejection.
I'm going to support the, to give them a pass and give grace, and that for the same reasons that have been stated. And I'm quite surprised that we've had this much discussion on this project. It is $2,300, which is a huge amount of money in our budget, but I agree. Sorry, people forget and people don't understand, and it's a one-time thing you do in your life when you move in your house. And I've forgotten things in the past, too. Any comments from Karski? Otherwise, we will vote. And we will make a motion and vote.
Made my comments last time, so.
Okay.
Now we're voting.
We need to have a motion first, so.
Okay.
I would make a motion to defeat the denial.
I'll second it.
In a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Passes three to two.
Thank you.
Item number seven is notices and requests. There are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. Item A is the first reading and authorize the auditor to publish notice of the public hearing on April 24th, 2018 at 9:00 for a meeting of the Minnehaw County Commission on an ordinance amendment pertaining to the allowable size of auxiliary, accessory buildings according to parcel size. Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. This item is being brought to you, originally it was requested from the Del Rapids and county commissions, joint planning commissions, to review, the first after review, the accessory building size. Currently in our ordinance, properties that are in a subdivision require a conditional use permit if they wish to construct a building larger than 1,200 square feet. And this is in a small joint jurisdictional area around Del Rapids. Staff reviewed this and found that our, the last seven conditional use permit requests in the joint jurisdictional area, five of them have been for this particular request for larger accessory buildings. The new table, rather than 1,200 square feet, would have a table of parcel size to the size of accessory building. So one acre or less would be able to have 1,600 square feet. 1.1 to 3 acres would be able to have 2,400 square feet. And 3.1 acres would have 3,600 square feet. And this is the same table that has been adopted by the joint jurisdiction of Sioux Falls and the county. So, this is the first reading, so authorize the auditor publish notice for April 24th public hearing.
And Kevin, when we have that public hearing, that will be a joint with Del Rapids?
Yep. That will be a joint meeting.
Is there a motion to authorize publication for notification?
There is.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Madam Chair, one more comment. The Del Rapids City Council felt that our limit was still too small. The city of Sioux Falls felt it was too high. What can I say?
I have a motion as second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien, which was deferred from March 20th, 2018. Is Melinda presenting on this? Who is presenting on this? Carol, who's presenting on this?
I think I can hear Melinda on the telephone and-
Yeah.
So she may be delayed just slightly.
So this is DPNO number 76366. Any amount of, oh, we can have the state's attorney's office address it for us, Carol.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I think that the, Melinda Storley had presented the memo the last time.
She comes running. And we can hear you. Thank you.
Good morning, Melinda Storley, Commission Assistant. This is a petition for compromise. The petitioner is requesting to compromise two separate liens. One of them is DPNO 76366 in the amount of $1,350. It represents public advocate fees for the petitioner and IVC court-appointed attorney fees for the petitioner's nephew. She was trying to get help for her nephew. DPNO 94918 in the amount of $244.40 is a second time she applied for IVC court-appointed attorney fees for assistance for her nephew again for, but on this one, she later requested that the IVC be dismissed. She had some transportation issues and didn't think she wanted to continue with it. That's why the fees are so different. The first one is 84530 and the other one is 24440. No payments have been made on either lien, and there is no real estate transaction. She's requesting to have both liens compromised in full with no payment.
And we deferred this from last week. There's a petitioner here? No. Petitioner's not here. So, Commission.
Well, I think we had, we had, I had to have the minutes printed because I remembered we had some conversation on this, and I was trying to remember exactly what had happened. But ultimately, we had asked to defer it because we were looking for some guidance from the state's attorney's office about exactly when IVC, IVC costs can be assessed against the person requesting the IVC. And I was wondering if the state's attorney would just give some update on that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the commission has the two statutes in their possession. The first, DPNO 76366 is two different applicable statutes. The public defender 50480 under 23A4014, which provides that the board can enforce, foreclose, satisfy, compromise, settle, subordinate, release, or otherwise dispose of the lien. So that's the portion that are the court-appointed attorney's fees. And then under the IVC statute 84530, which was the, the roadblock three weeks ago, is under 342870.1. And that provides that the county must be reimbursed for the expense by the petitioner, the applicant here, as long as the petitioner is a family member and is financially able to do so. So two different standards under that first DPNO, depending on public defender, IVC court-appointed attorney. And then under the second one, which is number 94918, that's all IVC. So the applicable statute is the 342870.1, which states again, that the county must, shall be reimbursed for the expense by the petitioner if the petitioner is a family member and is financially able to do so.
Thoughts? Commissioner Benner?
These are always tough, because when you look at it and you have a, an adult, an adult that's making a referral to try to help somebody out, and then they get stuck with the bill, I have a problem with that, first of all. And then secondly, when you go through the application process and look at the financial status of the person who did this, there's no way that they can afford any payment, frankly. So I'm going to make a recommendation that we settle this with no reimbursement. Both of them, correct.
Additional comments? Commissioner Benner?
Well, first of all, I think there's only $1,089.70 were related to the IVCs.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm not sure that, even if I go along with the logic about releasing the IVCs, I don't think we should release the other portion, which I believe was the person's individual, was the cost of attorneys for that person individually.
I agree. I was just talking about the IVCs. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to clarify that, then.
Thank you. I didn't clarify it very well.
Additional comments? Commissioner Benner? Are you still thinking?
No, I, you know, I mean, I have historically been of the opinion, because I thought that IVCs were only assessed against parents. And, I mean, I do think parents have responsibilities for their children and, and, you know, there's a lot of costs that go along with raising kids. And so, I have always voted to leave the IVCs in place for parents. But this is new information to me. And here, we've got what really amounts to a pretty distant relative, which arguably is no different than the argument that Commissioner Barth makes frequently on this, that, you know, somebody, a friend shouldn't get off any easier than a parent. And with this new information, I really have to agree with that argument, that it's, and specifically when the statute says that they have to be financially able, and there's really, given this information, there's no way a reasonable person could say that this person was financially able. So, I, I would support releasing the $1,089.70 related to the IVC costs and leave the remainder on the individual applicant.
I would second that as a motion.
Do we need them by, I'm sorry?
DPNO, no, we do not.
We do not? Okay, not by DPNO.
We can make the motion how we want it and they'll figure it out and it'll be in the resolution as to how it works. So I have a motion in a second to release the amount of $1,089, which represents the IVC costs. A motion and a second. And then leave the remaining costs against the applicant. For those who are not aware, IVC is involuntary commitment. And we talk in acronyms all the time, which sometimes is confusing. And the other thing is, is that if you looked at the petition, you would see this person doesn't have any money, is barely scraping by. We don't require people to pay off or we're going to come after you. We just expect you to try to make payments. And if you made a $5 payment every two months or three months, we would be really happy. And so, we don't come after you and beat your door down.
Is the applicant here?
Commissioner Barth.
Is the applicant here?
No. Yep, applicant's not here. So I have a motion in a second. Is there any additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Now we have the opportunity for public comment.
Thank you.
If there's anyone, thank you, Melinda. Anyone who would like to speak about something that is not on our agenda for today? And I'm not seeing anyone moving. So, oop, I am see somebody moving. If you would just give your name and your address for the record and, good morning.
Hi, I am Stephen Ciano. I can get mail at the banquet. And I have been in the area since 2002. I'm, I am a targeted, blacklisted, disabled veteran. And I've suffered at the hands of the local VA here with what amounts to a covert attempt on my, to cause my death through prolonged deprivation of my needs. I have given up, although I've been still in touch with the present directors of the VA regional office and hospital. I have also been addressing the city council on a somewhat regular basis as I am physically able. I, I was disabled in '78 as a result of an attack on me in the military for my beliefs. I was disabled with PTSD, and it's been covered up ever since. And my, my disability claim has to, involves what could amount to whistleblowing, because you got to expose what happened to me in the military. And they don't like that in the culture of the military and the VA as well. And they've made up labels. People in and out of the VA have been part of it. I have reported it to the local police now, and I'm trying to get people prosecuted. I don't know what role this body may have. If there's any supervisory authority you may have over city entities, but I have asked of the mayor and, and city council that they provide some oversight over the clinic, the medical clinic, where I'm receiving medical care now, because it's been unavailable covertly through the VA. And I'm trying to get the VA to pay for it, and I'm trying to get city attorneys who claim to, they just cover, as is the case. And, well, I, I figure I put it out there. I don't know about the county sheriff. I have read some things on law where it says that the county has primary authority over all issues. So maybe it's best that I present it here and offer any kind of response you might offer to this. There's been people dying associated with VA as well as mental health. I, I repeat again, that my primary disability since '78 has been documented. They know it. They have known it since 2004 here. And they've been covering it up, is PTSD since '78. So, I am hopeful and it's probably, certainly not unless I die tomorrow, it's not going to be the last time you'll hear from me or about me. Thank you.
Mr. Ciano, thank you for your service to our country. We appreciate what you've done for us. We do have a Veterans Service Courts office here in Minnehaw County, and the staff, our staff could get you in contact with them to help you work through some of the stuff that the county can help you with.
I have tried, and certainly if you, if you direct me that way, I will try again. However, it was futile in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak about a public comment at this time? All right. With that, we will move on to regular business. Item number nine is, excuse me, item number 10 is a public hearing to consider the transfer of the retail on-off sales wine license application by Wild Water West. Olivia?
Yes. As you stated, this is a public hearing to consider the transfer of a retail on-off sale wine license application by Wild Water West. A couple of weeks ago, we did their malt beverage license due to ordinance MC16-151-17 and conditional use permit number 18-01. We need to add a portion onto their legal description so that they can use the entirety of their business.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak in, in support of this? Is there anybody from Wild Water West that would like to speak?
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay. Okay, is there anyone who wants to speak against this? Okay, so you know anyone? I would look for a decision from the commission.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eleven is consider a motion to issue a proclamation for the Compass Center recognition April 2018 as sexual awareness, sexual assault awareness month. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Michelle Markgraf, executive director from the Compass Center here in Sioux Falls. And we are looking at April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And I ask that you consider a motion to declare April Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Minnehaha County. I have a declaration here to read. It is, whereas sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community, creating the need for public awareness and prevention education. Whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community. And statistics show one in five women and one in sixty-seven men will be raped at some point in their lives. Whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience sexual assault before age eighteen. Whereas on campuses, one in five women and one in sixteen men are sexually assaulted during their time in college. Whereas sexual assault affects every person in Minnehaha County, either as a survivor of sexual assault or as a family member, significant other, friend, neighbor, or coworker. Whereas the citizens of Minnehaha County have the power to make a change in these statistics by using their voice to stop sexual violence before it happens and to promote safety, respect, and equality. Whereas individuals can embrace their voices to show their support for survivors, stand up to victim blaming, shut down rape jokes, correct harmful misconceptions, promote everyday consent, and practice healthy communication with kids. Whereas the voices of survivors offer us important insights into the personal pain and loss that victims endure and our voices that deserve our county's attention and respect. Whereas wearing a teal ribbon will represent support against sexual violence. I ask you to declare that this is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2018.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? I would like to also say that the Compass Center is one of our nonprofits that does a lot of very good work in our county. And Minnehaha County does support them. And it's very much needed. And I think our sheriff has a few comments that he would like to add. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Morning, commissioners. I just wanted to point out, I have two of my detectives here. I have Jason Gierman, the captain of investigations, and also Travis Stoffaker, detective specifically works domestic violence cases and sexual assault cases. And I just want to support this motion and the resolution. Michelle does a great job. The Compass Center is a tremendous asset to people who are victimized in our community. I'm one of those who worked in the environment before we had someone like the Compass Center. And I can't, it's a difference between night and day. And so, I just wanted to let you know that the sheriff and my officers support this hundred percent and appreciate everything that Compass Center does.
Thank you, sheriff. Any other comments? We also have our state's attorney's office here.
Good morning, commissioners. Aaron McGowan, Minnehaha County State's Attorney. I too would ask for your support in this resolution. We really appreciate all the work the Compass Center does for this community. And Michelle does a great job. And this is a very important topic close to our heart and our work. So, thank you and I support this resolution.
Thank you, Aaron. Comments from the commission? Commissioner Barth?
Well, this is one of the organizations that we, during budget hearings, are always wish we could scrape up some more to help them. At the same time, the sheriff pointed out an interesting thing, which is that this is something that without the Compass Center, the county would have to have a county department to do this. We would have to have a staff, a director. Having a non-governmental organization do these kinds of things is so important to us because you have more latitude to act than the county. I often suggest that, you know, you can kick people out of a lot of places, but you can't kick them out of jail. And, you know, a non-governmental organization has a little bit more latitude, a little bit more bite sometimes, I think. And I know that you have a great record as far as, I think, recidivism amongst offenders that you work with. And I guess I'm willing to listen to more about what you guys might be doing on a statewide basis or outside of, you know, what's going on in other areas.
Look for a motion for this proclamation. And this is for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. We are trying to make aware, the community aware of what is going on in our community and that we are trying to help. And so, it's about awareness. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion.
Second?
Motion, second. Additional comments? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
That will go on to item number twelve is authorize a chairman to assign easements assigned with the city of Sioux Falls for access to county property. Good morning, Craig.
Good morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. As it is getting to be spring, the city is starting on a number of construction projects on different roadways in Sioux Falls. And there's a project that will run along Madison Street as well as North Louise Avenue, which is right next door to the fairgrounds. So, it will impact the fairgrounds as far as different events that they are able to hold. And in fact, the fair wants to be a good partner in this process. However, they have indicated that they have also lost some events that could be held at the fairgrounds due to some disruption because of the construction that will run along Madison Street and North Louise Avenue. As I stated, the county and the fair wants to be a good partner in this process. We understand that it needs to move forward. And so, in that process, excuse me, there are a few easements that the commission needs to consider offering. One easement, the first one, is for a permanent sidewalk utility easement. And this easement would be at the northeastern corner of the intersection of Madison Street and North Louise Avenue. The second easement, under consideration, given that section of Madison Avenue will be shut down, concrete materials is immediately to the east as well as to the north of the fairgrounds. And they need a route to get some of their heavy-duty trucks in and out of their property. And so, what has been proposed is a construction easement that would allow for a temporary path to be created across part of fairground land. As part of that easement, a fence would also be set up in order to keep traffic from going out into an area under construction. And then, once construction would be completed on Madison Street and Louise Avenue, the easement would require the city to reseed the grass and return it to as close to its original condition as possible before the construction would happen. And then, lastly, this is connected but somewhat unrelated to the project of construction on Madison Street and North Louise Avenue. The city would like to expand access to the bike trail. And I learned this having looked into the easements, but part of the fairgrounds includes land on the east side of the river. And so, there is an intersection at North Helen Avenue as well as West Third Street, where the city would like to construct a permanent spur to the bike trail. And the only requirements on the county is that we maintain the area to be free from debris, branches, or so, anything that would be blocking access to the bike trail. We do have project engineer Craig Lordson with HR Green here today, as well as John Osman with the city, who is an engineer as well. And they would be happy to answer any questions. And I guess the last comment that I would make is certainly of the utmost importance as far as completing the construction, is the impact to the fair. And the fair happens every year in August. And so, it was critical that we insisted that the construction needs to be done before the fair so that the fair attendance wouldn't be impacted. And so, there have been incentives as well as penalties put in place for construction to be targeted for access to the fair to open back up no later than July 25th. Would be happy to answer any other questions as well if you have them.
Okay. Are there any questions for Craig or for the engineers? Or we also have a representative from the fair here. So, any questions for anyone? Commissioner Barth or Benega?
We have the engineer who has technical support.
Craig Lordson with HR Green Company. Just for everybody's knowledge, if you're unaware, HR Green did the design for the city on this project. In the process of the design, trying to coordinate access for concrete materials as well as the county's property and the fair, we came up with the temporary access through the property. With the fair starting early August, the project was phased. And we put an interim completion date on the project of July 26th to make sure that if the contractor was struggling to meet that date, we had a few days of, you know, we had a week to ten days of leeway before the fair started. On top of that, the city put a five-thousand-dollar-a-day incentive on the project for a total of ten days. And per the contractor's schedule he has provided to us, their intent is to get all ten days of that incentive. So, they are pushing for a July 16th completion of that phase that would open Madison Street in its entirety. And then, while the fair is happening, the only thing under construction would be Louise Avenue north of Madison Street.
Is, on the temporary construction easement, if that part of the parking lot is destroyed by deep ruts or whatever, is there a provision in the contract that would make sure that that is restored so that we don't have, because we parked there?
Yes. Yeah, we're going to build a temporary road through there. So, we're bringing in material, gravel, probably some oversized material underneath to build that up to support the trucks and maintain that while that is in use. And then, after that is, use is complete, that will all be restored back to the original conditions.
Thank you. Commissioner Kersky?
That temporary gravel access, that's strictly for concrete materials, correct? I mean, that's not a diversion out for Madison for the public to take or...
Nope, it will be directly into concrete materials property. And with their MSHA requirements, there's special training. Anybody that operates on their property, even for us doing inspection on the project, we have to go through some MSHA training to be able to be on their property. So, they do not want anybody to access their property other than their trucks. And that is the sole intent to that temporary easement is for their equipment and their trucks.
Additional questions? Commissioner Benega?
I just have a comment that we're talking primarily about the concerns of the fair. But frankly, the city has some skin in this game also because if the fair has poor attendance, their sales tax revenue is going to go to pot. And that is an incentive for them to make sure that this project's done on time and without interruption also, certainly.
If there's no additional questions, I'd look for a motion.
Move for approval?
Oh, excuse me. We have to do one at a time. So, I'm sorry. We do have it here, written here somewhere. I'll find it. We got it right here. Okay. Item number one is a permanent sidewalk and public and/or private utility easement. It's track two. WH lines addition to the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota. I motion on that one.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. The next one is temporary construction easement. That portion of track two, WH lines addition to the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, described as B1, B2, B3, and is shown on the plan map. Numbers E-02 and E-03 attached to and made part of this easement as set forth in full. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. And the last one is a permanent pedestrian slash bike trail easement, track two, WH lines addition to the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota.
I'll make that motion and then I have a comment.
Second.
A motion and a second with a comment.
I just want to make a shout out to the bike trail because it's my favorite thing about the Sioux Falls parks. And so, I'm really thrilled that we get to help contribute to that amenity.
And I actually had a question on the bike trail too because I'm the same as Commissioner Bender. I love that amenity.[1439.12] Bender, I love that amenity, is, is, are they just, because there's already bike trail right there, so are they just expanding it or are they moving it more into our property or?
We're, we're installing a pedestrian bridge. As you know, if you travel Madison Street right now, there's jersey barriers that block off one lane-
Yep.
-for a pedestrian crossing and with the expansion of Madison Street, we need the extra lane on the bridge, so we're, we'll be installing a pedestrian bridge to the south of the roadway bridge and while that's under construction, it'll impact the bike trail through that area just south of Madison Street. So we're putting in a detour for the bike trail, which will take them down Helen, I believe it's Second Street, kinda west of Carousel Skate, that's where we're putting in the access to the trail.
Okay.
And in discussion with City Parks Department and stuff, it was preferred to spend the money to put it in and leave it in place for future growth rather than to tear that back out. So we'll be putting that connection and that will stay as a extra permanent connection to the trail and then when the pedestrian bridge is installed and that work is done, everything there will be redone, we're actually doing some improvements and, to conform with ADA standards.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. And we do have a motion of second on that last part, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate the county's support.
Okay, and our next three are going to be presentations and I would ask the presenters if you would keep these to anywhere from eight to 10 minutes. Item number thirteen is a brief program presentation from the Chamber of Commerce Ag Business. Holly Behrens, good morning.
Good morning, thank you for the opportunity to chat with you all today about the agribusiness division of the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce and I would like to first start off by saying that I am just shy of eight months in this position, so all activities and functions have not fully been experienced by me yet, but I will do the best I can to give you as much detail as possible on the programs that all of you support throughout our calendar year. So, my PowerPoint is coming up right now, I hope, and just starting off by letting you know what the mission statement of the agribusiness division is of the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. The agribusiness division advances and promotes the Sioux Empire as an agricultural center through actions that provide a higher visibility of the industry and programs to enrich the economic stability of rural society and those, and those businesses associated or involved with agriculture. And there it is, in case I said that too fast. So I hit just briefly in the statement about the actions that the agribusiness division performs throughout the year. The annual Sioux Empire Farm Show, the Ag Appreciation Day, and two new additions in my short time in this role have been National Farmers' Day and National Ag Day. I will hit a little bit more on what is new to come in the year 2018 and 19 on those two additions. Whenever I started this position, I was encouraged to get through a successful year, so I was also encouraged not to change much. So these are two additions that will happen in the future and I'm very excited about highlighting the importance on these national recognized days. So as I just hit on, one of our first actions that happens throughout the year is the Sioux Empire Farm Show and this does take place out at the WH Lion Fairgrounds, we were just talking about that, and the event takes place in the Expo Building. So just a little bit more background on the event, it is the largest annual Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce event, happens annually for 65 years. I have only attended one of the 65 years and also managed it my first year, so I am excited to talk to all of you today about some changes and a lot of analysis that went into fresh eyes and this event that has been a part of Sioux Falls for so long. So, moving right along, just as you all spoke about the volunteers that you have and the support system that you have, the Sioux Empire Farm Show has traditionally had 200-plus volunteers to make sure that this, the successful event did take place and an estimated economic impact of $3 million. And this is a number that is approximated with the CVB and the Chamber working together. So this is actually an area that we hope to improve the accuracy and get us an exact number since we did wrap up the 2018 show just there at the end of January. So whenever I think back to a successful Sioux Empire Farm Show, I like to throw in some numbers, being that before I came into this position, there was not an actual mission statement to the event. I think mission statements definitely allow us to capitalize on different areas of, of why we're doing something and since that was not in place until now, which I'll read it to you in just a second, I compared back to entries and financial statistics from years past. So as you can see, those first six columns are the purebred cattle shows and sales. Consignors come from all over the nation and really for our purebred cattle shows and sales, they come from all over the region. If we look a little bit further into the rest of the graph that I've provided, you can see that the shows, the Market Swine Show, Market Lamb Show, Market Goat Show and Market Beef Show have asterisks after them on the graph. Those are the shows that the exhibitors have the opportunity to make it to the Mayor's Roundup and Sale of Champions event that takes place on the Friday of the Sioux Empire Farm Show week. So as you can see, if we're looking at the majority of those shows, we had a significant increase in all market shows for 2018 aside from the Market Swine Show and there is a big reason for that one that I will hit on in just a brief moment. And then rounding up the rest of the columns there, you see that the breeding heifer show was up and this is actually the record amount of entries that have ever been at the Sioux Empire Farm Show, as, at least as far as I could date back. So that's some exciting things happening there and will continue to happen with a lot of enhancement and implements that will happen for 2019. So as I hit on, the Market Hog Show was down significantly in numbers and I know maybe most of you won't remember the snow falling on that Monday of our Sioux Empire Farm Show week like I was. When everyone else had a late into school and a late into work, I was praying that it stopped so that all of my hog show exhibitors could travel to Sioux Falls and unfortunately it didn't stop. So just like today, travel was not as beneficial or desirable for most people and so in turn our numbers were down. And a few other things that became red flags for me in my first year of attendance of the Sioux Empire Farm Show was our paid barn crew with some performance evaluation and some things moving forward. We are restructuring our barn crew role throughout that week and I know that I am really having to cruise through this because 10 minutes isn't enough time for me to talk, so I do encourage any questions. I'm, I could hit more on the barn crew, but I'm gonna keep on flying. We will have an application and hiring process moving forward in this role to hopefully highlight and best control the duties that were supposed to be there. So for me, it was a negative. Utilities expense increase, we had three colder days with stronger winds and although we definitely appreciated the addition to the ventilation system of the Expo Building out at the WH Lion Fairgrounds, for us and the time of year, it actually was not able to run throughout the duration of the week because of how cold it was and it sucked out our heat. So it does do a great job of controlling the dust in the building, however, for us, it did suck up all of our heat and we had to turn it off. So that was one little part I just wanted to hit on real quick. I've never been to the show before this year, so I'm not really able to say if the dust was any better or not. And the doors, those stayed open too much and that is a direct reflection of our lack of performance in our barn crew. So the purebred cattle sales were also down now that we've been through a show and a little bit of advantage in the niche market that we have on this side of the state is that we are able to hone in on the smaller production scaled operations. So now that that has been identified, we are gonna be able to capitalize on this moving forward. And then also this year, the economy didn't really help with that portion of our sales. So just a few, a few things that I caught going through my first experience and some negative sides that we do and hope to increase next year. And obviously, we had some positives and additions. Our scholarship auction, all money raised for our scholarship auction goes directly to scholarship applicants who apply for the scholarship. This year, we had a record of $11,240 raised, so all that goes back to the kids and the future of agriculture, which is a really neat thing and something to get excited about. In 2017, the collegiate livestock judging contest did not happen. So in 2018, it was a big push for the collegiate livestock judging contest to come back and I'm thankful that we did. We brought in $7,400 just on this portion of the event and we were able to reach a regional, we were able to capitalize on a regional reach of 19 different national schools coming from Oklahoma and Kansas and all over the nation. It was an exciting thing to see with 244 contestants. So this is something we definitely hope to continue to grow year after year. Some presentation show aspects that were implemented was an opening ceremonies with the national anthem sang before the beginning of each show day and we also had higher quality woodchips and some other things that really consignors and cattle producers, cattle producers will recognize, but nothing more I need to talk about. We did enhance our social media interaction this year with a quadruple increase in interaction on our platform and we were able to do a lot of live feed throughout the duration of the show and leading up to the show. So it really was able, it allowed us to connect with our exhibitors and everyone traveling to Sioux Falls. And it also helps on the side of where we need to be improved. We had a lot of comments on what we need to do better, so it's definitely helpful in that area as well. And for the first time, we had merchandise that was available to all of our exhibitors that traveled to Sioux Falls. A little bit of budget talk, I really need to hustle, I know, so I'm going to just hit on a few things. Overall, the Sioux Empire Farm Show 2018 brought in $232,969 roughly. Our expenses were a little above that at $235,849 with a little over $2,000 in the red. So two specific topics I wanted to bring up was the commercial exhibit space and trade show, trade show space. I will be talking about that whenever I talk about the future of the Sioux Empire Farm Show. So we do pay a third party, or traditionally, we have paid a third party to run the trade show space of the Sioux Empire Farm Show week. And so moving forward, we are evaluating this and we do believe we can bring it internally and be able to capitalize on some educational aspects. As well as the horse pool I put out there, traditionally, this event has been in the red and with a little bit more tender love and care, I see this being a general public event that can really bring Sioux Falls and see something that you wouldn't really see in our area. All of our contestants and exhibitors come from Wisconsin where the horses still drag logs and help around the operations that they have there. So it's a really neat thing to see, I just think with some more promotion, we can get that back into the black and we need to. So just wanted to hit on those things. Because the future of the Sioux Empire Show is going to be a little different looking forward. For 65 years, there's been a lot of tradition and history packed into the Sioux Empire Farm Show week, but moving forward, it has been proposed and accepted that we are changing the name and rebranding to the Sioux Empire Livestock Show. There, the third party that I mentioned just a second ago that runs the trade show commercial exhibit space out at the Expo Building is also running the whole show over at the Convention Center. So, or the whole entire facility over there and-
The same weekend, correct?
The same week, yes, the exact same week. So everyone thinks that we are benefiting from our event with what is going on over there and we definitely support and we have a lot of interest in what they do over at the Convention Center. It's called the Sioux Falls Farm Show and it's ran by Midwest Shows and that who, that's who has been running the trade show portion out of the Expo Building as well and we pay them quite a chunk to do so. So we, moving forward, think that we can take this on internally, we know that we can take it on internally and we have decided to go a route of rebranding with the marketing strategy to separate ourselves and minimize potential farm show confusion, increase livestock show entries and capitalize on the show mission. So what we also have going on at the Expo Building are all the livestock shows that I talked about earlier and when you have people traveling nationally to come to Sioux Falls, there's a lot of people that don't understand that it's not just farm show equipment out there, it's the youth and the future of agriculture that are out there proud to bring their project that they've been working on year in and year out. So the Sioux Empire Livestock Show, sponsored by the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce, promotes and celebrates agriculture by hosting an annual authentic experience that educates and entertains the community, assists youth financially with academic endeavors and offers economic support through national livestock consignments and trade show opportunities. Is this just a mission statement I put together? That has not yet been approved, but it's something that we are definitely looking at and moving forward to make sure that we are getting done what needs to get done with the Sioux Empire Livestock Show and with the same tradition that's always been there and the volunteer support and community support that we've, there, there has always been. So if there are any questions on this particular part, I would be more than happy to answer them right now and if not, I'm gonna keep on going through our year and I-
I think Commissioner Berth has a question for you.
Well, I guess if you've got more, I'll wait, reserve my comments till-
Okay. I'm only through January, so we still have 11 more months.
Ms. Behrens, you moved here, what, last November?
I moved here last August.
Oh, and let me just say, winter will end in six months.
Are you sure? Because I don't think it's ever going to end. Today was fun.
Texas, right?
I am, I'm from South Texas and I hope that you can see the passion that I have towards the livestock show industry. I did come from a very heavy and involved livestock show background, so very excited to be here in South Dakota and Sioux Falls more specifically. So I'll move right along. Whenever I did start my position, just shy of eight months ago, I was told that there were two events that I managed and needed to get done and successfully and the second of those were being the Ag Appreciation Day that is in conjunction with the Sioux Empire Fair. This past August, I did attend the Ag Appreciation Day, however, I was not a part of the preparation or anything, I had just moved here two days before. So it was, I was pretty tired from all that U-Haul driving. So traditionally, the Ag Appreciation Day falls on the Wednesday of Sioux Empire Fair Week. It is a complimentary lunch that is served from 11 to 1:00 PM in front of the grandstand at the WH Lion Fairgrounds. More than 2,000 local ag producers attend, attended the Ag Appreciation Day in 2017. Obviously, like anything, weather does have something to do with that as well and it was raining on that day. So what's new for August 8th of 2018? And although our preparation has not yet started, I, it will start in May and I get married this month, so I'm not gonna lie, some preparation has been done, but there are a lot of educational aspects that we hope to incorporate into our August 8th event and if there are any suggestions on those who have attended, I am all ears, always and are very, am very excited to completely enhance and make sure that this is the event of Fair Week that everyone wants to be a part of. So earlier, I mentioned two small things about how I have lived through October here and now March. So two days that I do see us having events or partnering, partnering to make sure that the appreciation of the ag community is there is National Farmers' Day, which is October 12th annually and this year it is a Friday. So we have talked to a few partners about what we can do just to make sure that our farmers that clothe and feed us daily are feeling appreciated and then in turn, National Ag Day is another one that we really need to hone in on. So in addition to all of the events and functions that I had just mentioned, while we love to advance and promote the ag industry and it stands as our primary goal as a division, all activities and functions of the division serve as opportunities to further agricultural communication and education between the city and ag community. So something that when I was interviewing for this position was a real push was education in the Sioux Falls School District. So that's something that has been really exciting to watch develop since I've been here for just shy of eight months and the Ag in the Classroom campaign that is going on right now with several pilot schools being here in Sioux Falls, along with everything that's going on out at the Stockyards Ag Experience, just shows the history of Sioux Falls and the ag community and why Sioux Falls is what it is today. So I hope that was 10 minutes. And now if, if anyone does have any questions or comments, I would be more than happy to try my best to answer them.
Commissioner Berth.
You know, I, Ms. Behrens, I met you at St. Patrick's Day and it was a chilly, wet day then too. But I really appreciate the enthusiasm you're bringing to this and renewing, you know, the naming, et cetera, I think it'll bring new energy to, to our operations at the fairgrounds and, you know, it's not really well-known anywhere, but Minnetonka County is one of the top agricultural counties in South Dakota and it's certainly part of our heritage and something that I think all of us fully support and so thank you, it's good to see you and meet you.
Thank you so much, it was great meeting you too. It was a fun day.
Additional comments?
Holly, I just have one other question. Is there gonna be any co-mingling, if you will, between what's going on at the fairgrounds with, and activities with the, frankly, the Stockyards exhibit that's being developed and built?
Yes, definitely. So they, the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce Community Appeals Campaign for the Stockyards Ag Experience, the drive just ended for the Stockyards Ag Experience and they, yes, there is a lot of partnering that is done and will continue to be done with what they have going on out there. It definitely, that's where I learned the most about the history of the agriculture of not only South Dakota, but Sioux Falls and really what Sioux Falls is today because of the Stockyards out there. So if you really want to know, part of our trade show opportunities that I see taking it over internally are some educational aspects and interactive booth space and seminars and presentations that go on throughout the week there and one of the partners, I do feel like we would like to give the day, the Friday of our, of our show week to the to the Stockyards Ag Experience to just be able to reiterate the history and how important agriculture is to our city. So yes, we love them.
Yep. One more comment for Holly and that was, I heard Holly's presentation last week at the chamber meeting and we did talk privately about the ventilation system and I have talked to Scott and he will be following up with you at a later date about that.
Awesome.
And Joe was here representing Scott.
Actually, Joe Beal from the fairgrounds also, but I got to be on the committee when we were selecting a candidate for this and I tell you, we had a nationwide search and we had a lot of applicants and this girl stood out among all of them from the very beginning and as you can see, I think we've got one of the top people in the world when it comes to agriculture and we're so excited for her, for what she's not going to do just for our chamber, but what she's helping us with out at the fairgrounds too. She's amazing.
Yep. Thank you, Holly.
See you later.
And best wishes on your upcoming wedding, so, okay.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number 14, which is a brief praise, a brief presentation from the Human Services Program update, Carrie Vence.
You're gonna stress that brief, aren't you? Good morning.
I'm reading right off the agenda.
Carrie Vence with Human, Human Services for the county. So we really were given the opportunity, each department was given a directive to talk to you a little bit about the services that each department have and I think I've, I've felt like I've done that many times before and so our department decided to do a little bit different this time. So we wanted to really come before you and have an opportunity to talk to you about, yes, our programs, but really talk to you in preparation for the budget season in regards to what challenges we're facing. So that way, as we process our budget for 2019, you know the challenges that we're gonna be facing and that'll be reflected in our budget that we propose. And so with me, I just wanted to take a minute because we don't let the monkeys out of the cage very often, but the management team is here. So we have Brett Johnson, who is our supportive services manager, we have Jeff Yarborough, who is the manager for Safe Home, Lori Montes, who is the assistant director, and Jamie Phelps, who manages our medical department and then he also does our QA and informational stuff. So they are an awesome team and so honestly, they make my job 10 times easier, so I'm very appreciative of them. So first, okay, where do I go? Can you hit the, the next or do I hit the next? There we go. Whoop, that's too far. I missed one. How do I go back? Nope, I'm trying the arrow, it's not going back. Well, I'm gonna keep going because I know I only have 10 minutes. So, so I'll, we'll get there. So first of all, for emergency services, one of the things that we wanted to do is offer to you the challenges that we face within emergency services and as you know, emergency services are really at the core of what human services does and provides for our community. That's the services that provide the deposit assistance- Um, that's the services that provide the deposit assistance, rental assistance, utilities, medications, among other things. The challenges that our staff have really faced is that approximately thirty percent of those that we serve have an illness or an injury with no means to pay for their expenses for over an extended period of time. One of those being rent, uh, their medical costs for the care that they receive and the medications. Cases are closed and not processed due to items not, that are being requested, that those for verification, those items aren't being turned in. Um, sometimes it's a matter of simply somebody not being able to have the transportation they need to go get those items. Oftentimes, they just don't have the wherewithal, um, many times because of their illness. Whether that be mental illness, whether it be a medical, um, complication, they're just not able to do so. So in twenty seventeen, thirteen percent of our cases were closed just simply because the person didn't complete the process. And then our third challenge there is case complexity. Um, we all know that with individuals that we serve, um, many times they come with a criminal history. Oftentimes, they arrive with poor rental history, um, they have little to no employment history. Um, and then we also have a group that's the working poor. They are working and they're working diligently to try to make things happen for themselves. Um, but unfortunately, they oftentimes find themselves in more part-time positions, which offer no benefits. And so they end up being challenged in that aspect as well. Um, they're working difficult hours, sometimes getting to work, even getting home is a challenge because of the transportation system. So the, um, the measures that we're taking to address those challenges that we are working diligently on and doing strategic planning with, um, we will be completing outreach and providing more training and education to assist the community in awareness and education about our process. Um, we really do strive and work very diligently in regards to how do we, um, make those things happen for people. Um, and we want to do it collaboratively. When we do it, do it collaboratively, it makes their jobs easier and as well as ours. Um, secondly, identifying and focusing on the gaps and how we can more effectively and efficiently collaborate, um, and best utilizing the staff's strengths. We really have been working on, as it said, even in the last one, a site visit to learn. I think this is not the right, correct one here that you have up there. But we're identifying and focusing on the gaps and how we can more efficiently and effectively collaborate, um, and focus on the staff's strengths to help services. Um, we actually currently are working on redesigning our department just a little bit and utilizing our staff in more an effective, efficient manner. Um, we've started doing some case management with individuals who struggle with completing our application process.
That's the one, Jason, the one you just, that's the one.
Thank you. Um, so what we did is, because people aren't even completing the process, we actually have identified a staff member, um, that is going to become, um, a case manager and actually assisting people that struggle with our process, um, in completing the tasks. Uh, the great part is, is that by doing that, we're not duplicating any services. The services are already there for many individuals who receive service through places such as Southeastern Behavioral, um, throughout the drug and alcohol system and vet services, they have case management. But for many people, the average person, there is no case management within our community. And most often, we find that because there's no funding for that. And so we just decided that that was a measure we could take, um, and a challenge we were willing to take on because thirteen percent of our people, we lose purely because they don't complete the process. Um, we also have done plans of action on each of our notices when individuals come in and make application. With each person that comes in and leaves our office, they're given a plan of action, um, on their, um, on a document that they leave with. So then that way, that plan of action identifies, should you need to return to our office, here's the items or the, the tasks that need to be accomplished. Now that we have case management, should they return, we have the ability to assist them and walk through that process with them. So it makes it much more cohesive, um, and the likelihood that we'll hit success far greater. So our challenges that we have with our alliance, our jail reentry program. Um, the lack of transitional housing for reentry for that group. Oftentimes shelters end up being the only re, resort that they are, only option they have. And sometimes not even that as an option. Um, oftentimes individuals are banned from the shelters and are not able to access those services there. And so it comes back on us to be able to link them to those appropriate supports and housing options. Um, addressing the need of certain minority groups that are overrepresented or presented in the criminal justice system. Um, obviously, as Sioux Falls expands and our diversity becomes greater, we have that challenge as well. And then thirdly, complex cases with limited resources. Some of the individuals that we encounter through the Alliance program, um, are more often than not high recidivism in regards to criminal history, they've been in and out of the jail. Oftentimes, they're individuals who experience mental health, drug and alcohol issues. Um, and they oftentimes lack the ability and, um, even any skill set in regards to finding employment. And that kind of pairs off with that minority groups that we get involved with. Um, many times those individuals don't have the appropriate documentation that they need. In order to obtain that documentation, it takes a lot of money to do that. And so we've had to really do a lot of collaborative effort, and the, the Alliance staff have done a tremendous job at building a number of bridges in order for us to be able to assist those people in getting their appropriate documentation. Um, the Multicultural Center has paired with us in regards to helping find employment. And so we've had a lot more coaching going on with that population of individuals, which has been truly delightful um, because we're at a loss. Um, the measures that we're taking to address those challenges, um, we're seeking out transitional house options with partners and landlords in our community. Um, we actually have a few that have stepped forward, which has been an awesome opportunity for us to, um, not only teach them, but we get educated as well in regards to the challenges that we have. Work with the minority communities to address the needs of those in their community who are struggling. Um, we actually recently had a meeting with, um, the Sudanese population, as a matter of fact. We were, we had a group meeting, talked about the challenges that their populations face. Um, they were absolutely delighted to be able to meet. We met on a Saturday morning. Um, and they were so terrific to work with, very interested, very eager. And we're absolutely delighted to be able to come in and feel like they were heard, um, and want to be a part of the resolution, which is terrific. Um, we continue to facilitate weekly cart meetings, the Coordinated Assessment Reentry Team. Those meetings are held weekly in the jail, and it's a multidisciplinary team that talks about how do we take individuals from being incarcerated and get them reconnected to the, to the community. Um, obviously, we want them out of the jail as quickly as possible, um, so working within the confines of that legal system is awfully challenging. Um, we've also started the, to begin to work with the pre-trial staff that you all, um, had come on board. They're actually housed with us in Human Services, and so they're in the same hall as Alliance. And so it seems to be a pretty good marriage and a good team that can address that population. Um, and then we're also looking at trying to do a site visit, um, to a leading reentry planning and the case management system. Um, we've looked at multiple, um, I know that staff, they actually, Brett happened to mention yesterday, the staff had looked at one in New Mexico, and so we've had a lot of conversation about what that would mean. But, um, there's a lot of opportunity for us to look at other leading providers that we want to have guidance from. Um, then we also have our Synergy Program, the Homeless Family Program. Um, the challenges that they have faced is limited housing options for families due to the multiple barriers that they have. Again, we're back to the same items that we've talked about previously, poor rental histories, criminal histories. Um, oftentimes, they owe past landlords, they also owe South Dakota or Sioux Falls housing. Um, they lack consistency of employment, they're challenged in multiple ways. Families with challenges that warrant involvement with CPS. Um, we've had a ever-growing number of families that we have had to have entanglement with CPS. Um, we've really tried to build a lot of bridges there, um, and have better resources available to work with CPS. Um, we've come a long way in that area. Um, the complex families with multiple challenges, including mental health and chemical dependency. So often, we have, um, families that struggle with one or both of those issues. Oftentimes, those families have more than one member in their family with that issue. Oftentimes, it's including the children that are in that family. And then also the composition of families, that complex composition. We've often run into families where, um, they have children of either a friend or another family member, but there's no documentation of that. And so we lack the legal guardianship paperwork. And so working with child protection again, and how do we make those, how do we make those things happen? Um, because then it, then prevents them from getting services and additional supportive programming um, within the community because of that lack of paperwork. So the means and the measures that we've taken to be able to address those challenges, we've developed partnerships with the landlords who are willing to take chances on our families. Um, again, even having two or three is a beginning. It's a start, and so we're pleased with that. Pursue additional training for mental health and chemical dependency challenges. Um, our staff are faced with a number of challenges, and trying to better understand and work with those individuals is a ever-increasing issue. And so we try to keep our staff trained and well-aware of what those top priorities are in regards to training. Develop a better working relationship with CPS. As I said, I think, um, our two staff, Jeanette and Annie, have done a tremendous job in regards to building that relationship with them, um, having a better understanding of where CPS can stop and start their services and support. Um, but they also are better aware of the challenges that we're facing. And then to con, continue to work on the collaborative efforts, um, developing that team approach. Um, the saying, "It takes the village," is more than true in this arena. Um, we have families that sometimes come to our office that are eight and ten people strong. And so we have no housing in Sioux Falls that they can afford at that point. And so at least apartments, typically, we end up trying to pursue actual houses for those, those families because they're just too large. So, onto the medical services that we have. Um, the medical services are our hospitalizations, the medical equipment, COBRA, the assistance we provide and getting, making sure that people have insurance. So the challenges that that team faces, um, there's just multiple unknowns at the federal level. As you well know, the federal government is, um, kind of up in hobs, what do we do about all these things? And ACA has been one of those dilemmas and challenges that they've faced. Um, the Affordable Care Act has offered us, um, two options in South Dakota. We have the Sanford Plan and we have the Avera Plan. Um, that's it for South Dakota, other than other private vendors. Um, and that's been a challenge. Some of our folks just cannot afford insurance. And so we have stepped up and tried to assist people with at least getting linked with that ACA programming. Resolving past medical claims with the hospitals and getting those up to date, as you've heard me speak of previously. Um, we have a number of, um, hospital claims that are lying out there that are unsettled. Um, Mike Thompson has been an addition to our staff, um, that truly has been a true asset for us. He's available, he answers questions, he takes care of that whole legal piece, um, which we really, at this point, couldn't do without. And then lastly, obviously, our poor relief statutes, they're a little bit antiquated, and we need to give them some time and attention. Um, and Mike has been very willing, um, to participate in that, and we're hopeful that we can start to see some change in that arena as well. So in order to address those challenges, um, we keep updated on the proposed legislation and political climate regarding ACA. That's been a challenge, and obviously, um, we were incredibly glad that much of what they had proposed didn't happen. Um, they talked about decline in support for children's services, for their insurance, um, which would have meant that, uh, that would have had a huge impact on the county. Um, but much of what they had initially proposed did not go through, so we're pleased with that and will continue to keep up with the legislative items in that arena. Um, we'd also like to streamline our work with the hospitals and work on getting better edu, better, better educated in regards to what services and paperwork that they need in order to process claims. There has to be a way to be more effective in this arena, and so we are, we are in pursuit of that streamlined process. And then the S.A.O. appointed Mike Thompson. Um, honest to God, I don't know what we would have done probably in the last couple of years without Mike. Um, he's really propelled us forward, has been pivotal in us writing our process and our procedures within our office and addressing our needs. Um, and really being more accessible to the community. So we are forever appreciative of the appointment to him to our office. I hit the wrong one, sorry. Okay. And then on to Safe Home, this is our last program that I'll talk about today. Uh, the challenges that we have with Safe Home, um, it's ever-challenging and complex individuals. Our populace, we never have a shortage of consumers that we would like to see move into Safe Home. Staff there does an incredible job with making connection to a lot of individuals who need that service. Um, and that kind of leads to one of our, um, additional challenges of the engagement and follow-up. How do we actually start getting to know that population better, quicker, faster, so that we actually know them prior to them moving in? Um, as well as then when the individuals work, are ready to move out or are asked to leave the facility because they, um, have not abided by the guidelines. Um, we need to do better on the front end, and we need to do better on the back end. So that's a challenge that Jeff and his team has faced. Uh, the medical complications to care for these individuals, um, boy, there are a vast number of, of issues that we have in that arena, and we've experienced, um, the loss of individuals because of medical complications in the past couple of years specifically. Um, however, the team does an incredible job with monitoring these folks and really striving to make sure that we pay attention to what those needs are. And then we've also talked about our challenges of next step. How do we best address engagement and follow-up? What is that next step? What does it look like? Um, we've been asked multiple times, do we need to expand Safe Home? Do we need another Safe Home? Um, I think depending upon who you ask, um, and what day it is, you might find some different answers. Um, we certainly need to continue to address the needs of that population. Uh, but we also have expanding populations that I think we would, um, serve better in regards to getting on the front end of service. And so maybe it's not waiting until that we get individuals to this point in their life. Um, we want to be on that front end where Alliance can have that impact and hopefully get people out of some of those systems that they otherwise become engaged in. So for Safe Home, um, we have ongoing education of staff as well as residents. They purchased a T-three package, which is a, um, training package through a, um, it's digital. So we signed up to, we can access different trainings at any time, so staff can have ongoing opportunity for education. That's huge for us in regards to approach. Um, tracking of client contact and assuring medical follow-up is part of the case service plan. Um, right now, Jamie, who is our Q.A.I. guy, um, he's working with our I.T. in regards to having better ability to track data and information. Jeff will be coming to the commission, um, we're hopeful, um, maybe July-ish, August, um, with a report about Safe Home and what Safe Home looks like in regards to the last six years, which is pretty exciting. Um, exploration of engagement opportunities prior to moving in as well as moving out. That's probably one of the biggest pieces that we really need to strive for and focus on, um, in the next couple of years. Um, we know that this is a big piece. It takes time, it takes attention, it takes a ton of effort. Uh, but we really feel that having better engagement on the front end, as well as, um, when they leave Safe Home, we just can't leave them stranded upon their move out. And then exploring options to potential longer-term case management with that extended housing. How do we provide that care and that follow-along? Um, that's always a, a huge challenge for us. Um, and then very quickly, prior to getting into the slide, the last slide, I just want to mention to you, um, in that twenty seventeen annual report, um, we do house the VSO, which you mentioned earlier. Um, and just to kind of give at least a plug for, for Dave, he does an incredible job with our vets. Um, he's served nine hundred and seventy-eight veteran requests this past year in twenty seventeen, one guy. So he is a man of many talents. Um, the contact that he has is through phone, office visits, letters, doing group presentations at nursing homes. Um, and he identifies that he manages a variety of requests, for example, compensation, healthcare, questions about pension and discharge. So, um, albeit we didn't do a slide, you had the twenty seventeen annual report, so we didn't feel that we needed to have redundancy there. But outstanding that we have that opportunity for our vets. So just in summary, for our department's strengths, um, we have a staff, honestly, that's second to none. They're dedicated and committed to excellence, um, and the supervisors hold them to that standard. Um, we have Q.A. on our files that Jamie completes monthly on all of the programs and on all of the documentation. Um, we feel that we are best at this point. We are a leader in our community. Um, we have sound, positive working relationships and established collaborative efforts with providers. and established collaborative efforts with providers in our community. Um, we, that's how we survive, quite honestly. We don't provide the services that these folks need. We actually link them to the services that are in our community. So there's no reason for duplication, but we are the conduit for them. And if we do end up providing them the service, it's because it isn't out in our community and so we are it. Uh, the expansion of staff skillsets and changing choreography of staff, we're kind of chameleons in HS. We do what we need to do to get the job done. Um, and with each passing year, it seems that we need to change even more than what we have the year before. Uh, but the great part is the staff is willing to do that. And I think that we have made great accomplishments with those that we serve. Um, engagement in the community, we have staff that um, are on different collaboratives and different committees. Um, so we try to maintain pulse of what's happening in the community. And then obviously, we're just never shy, we never shy away from a challenge. Um, our team is always willing to look at what we, what we are doing. Are we doing it the best that we can? And if not, how can we do it differently, more effectively? Um, and so we've started planning. We always are planning and strategizing, uh, because our choice is to be proactive rather than reactive. So going forward for 2019, those are the challenges that we'll try to address in our budget and do so efficiently as possible.
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions for Carrie on Human Services? Okay. Thank you, Carrie. And next we have a brief presentation for the 2018 Facilities Department update.
Good morning, Commissioner. Mark Rins, Director of Facilities. I'm also in front of you today to give you a 2018 Department update on programs and services. Okay. So I'd like to start with uh, 2017 um, project list that we completed last year. Um, we'll start with uh, complex carpet. Uh, we replaced carpet in six courtrooms in the courthouse last year. Um, fairgrounds, Brettlewood Barn Roof, we replaced the roof on that building. Um, the Comfort Station out at the fairgrounds, we finished up construction with that. Um, we still got a few minor finishes to do, but it's operational. Um, the fairgrounds Expo Building, we replaced six large exhaust fans on the upper roof of that building. Um, the grandstand, we tuck-pointed the exterior um, of that um, structure. And then we caulked on the east side where the uh, seating and stairwell are. Um, the shop out at the fairgrounds, we also put a roof on that last year. Um, Health and Human Services Fire Alarm Panel Replacement is complete. Um, the GL Dormitory Shower Towel Replacement is complete. We uh, removed all the tile and put uh, epoxy coating in. Um, the GL G-Bach Expansion, we added twenty-four additional beds and an uh, officer station. The Juvenile Detention Center, we replaced a boiler in that building. And then uh, the Roof Repairs and Inspections Countywide. So we did our inspections and made all the repairs in all the buildings, that ended it. So for this year, um, back to carpet, we're looking at uh, second, third, and fourth floor back hallways to the courthouse. Um, and then we have a little bit down at the Juvenile Detention Center to do. Um, courthouse security upgrades, we're working at installing fifty-four additional badge readers. Um, the energy plant, plant boilerhead replacement is um, already installed. We're finishing up the fine-tuning on that project. Um, energy plant chiller repair, uh, repairs have started on that. Um, fairgrounds, uh, uh, grandstand paint, in the process of soliciting quotes. Um, the grandstand railing, um, build railing is removed and the new railing is currently being fabricated. Um, the armory roof, that uh, that project's out for bid currently and opens next week, April 11th, on Wednesday. Uh, asphalt out at the fairgrounds, we're looking at uh, roughly seventeen thousand square foot of asphalt replacement in the midway area. Um, Juvenile Detention Center Parking Lot Replacement is currently advertised and we open for bids, open bids tomorrow. Um, and also Parking Lot H Construction is advertised and we open those bids tomorrow along with JDC. Um, Public Defender Annex Fire Alarm Panel Replacement, the electrical work has started on that. And uh, soon as weather cooperates, we'll get back up on the roofs and do those inspections. So, um, some additional applications that we're working towards are, are part of our uh, countywide campus parking plan. Um, Fairgrounds Project List, we're prioritizing and pricing list of repairs out there this year again. Um, the GL Expansion Project, the Museum Archive Facility Project, Master Plan Study, uh, efficiencies, we are working towards annual order of supplies and parts. Um, continual training on DDC HVAC controls and electrical codes. Um, we have incorporated detailed plan maintenance scheduled, schedules for equipment. Um, LED conversions, we're continually doing them. The last one we did was actually in the Colosseum of the Multicultural Center. Uh, it's twenty light fixtures in there, cost us roughly six hundred and sixty dollars to replace them all and we'll have an annual savings of just over eleven hundred a year. That's based on an eight-hour day, so. Um, technology integration, uh, we're continually um, adding HVAC, DDC Controls Integration to our current system. Um, the most recent one we did was the JDC, um, HVAC Controls. Before we integrated them down here, if they needed a temperature adjustment, we'd have to send somebody down there in a truck. Where now we just log onto the system, change it, we're done. Um, and we're also working towards um, Fire Alarm Panel Integration onto our PCs for more efficiency and also uh, mobile apps for HVAC electrical equipment on smartphones. So. With that, are there any questions?
Any questions for Mark on facilities? We had a brief update in our building meeting too, and so we had an opportunity to ask Mark questions in that meeting. Okay, thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen, consider a recommendation in bid awards and authorize the chairman to sign agreements for various materials from the Highway Department Annual Materials Letting. Bids were opened on March fourteenth. Good morning, DJ.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent. Uh, this year our annual materials letting included five different proposals. And uh, and I'll touch on each one of those and I don't know if you want to vote on all five together or each one individually, probably?
Um, I think we're okay with all five together.
All five together, okay.
I think so. If we have a question, we'll pull it out, otherwise I think we'll just vote one vote.
Very good. Uh, so we, we solicited bids and uh, have five proposals for this year's annual materials letting. Uh, proposal number one was uh, medium curing cutback asphalt, MC70. That's the oil that we put down on the roads before we pave our asphalt patches. Uh, we received no bids uh, for the second year in a row on, on this proposal. It was, it didn't come to a hu- as a huge surprise. Uh, we are going to be purchasing less than twenty-five thousand dollars for this material. And so we'll be able to purchase from our supplier after getting quotes uh, from that supplier. Proposal number two, hot mix asphalt. Uh, we received two bids uh, for this item. Concrete Materials was the low bid on that one. We would recommend awarding it to Concrete Materials.
Madam Chair, I have a question on number two there. Uh, DJ, what's, what does the addenda uh, mean there by uh, concrete materials that Merlin Roy's doesn't have? What, what did they?
So in the solicitation for bids, we uh, require each bidder to acknowledge that they receive an addendum. And we did send out one addendum, it was not applicable to proposal number two. It was for proposal number... I'll have to look to make sure I don't give misinformation, but I think it's proposal four or five.
Proposal two, though, shows that Concrete Materials has one.
They, they just acknowledged that they received it.
Okay.
And, and so, uh, in order to award a bid, typically we re- we require a bidder to acknowledge that they'd received the addendum.
Gotcha.
Uh, let's see, so uh, proposal number two, we would recommend awarding to Concrete Materials. Uh, the price was a little bit of an increase from last year, about a six and a half percent increase from two thousand and seventeen. Uh, proposal number three is for snowplow and motor grade, uh, greater blade cutting edges. That's what we put on our, our blades for snow plowing typically. And uh, we received four bids, uh, or four proposals for uh, that item. We recommend awarding that contract to Titan Machiner in Sioux Falls. Proposal number four is abrasive and salt mixture. Salt sand is when we mix uh, salt and sand together. We put that on the road sometimes uh, during the winter to provide a little bit of extra traction when it's icy outside. Uh, we typically only receive one bid for that proposal and we received one this year from Concrete Materials. We recommend awarding it to uh, Concrete Materials. Uh, proposal number five, rock, salt, and transportation. Uh, we received seven bids on, on that proposal. There was a little bit of an anomaly, uh, where one of the bidders used the bid form from two thousand and seventeen. And so uh, there was a lot of discussion and, and going back and forth with the State's Attorney's Office uh, on this item. Uh, we do recommend awarding to Nebraska Salt and Grain Company uh, uh, for this, for this proposal. So with that being said, if you have any questions, I'll entertain any of those at this time.
Any additional questions? Otherwise, after um, discussing with the State's Attorney, we will do number five separately. So if you, if you have no questions on two, three, and four, I would take a motion on two, three, and four.
I'll make a motion to approve two, three, and four.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. On number five, since we are, um, since there was a suggestion or a request to reject part of it, we would need a motion to reject the low bid by Black Strap as non-responsive and not responsible for the reasons set forth by DJ. And then following that motion, we'll have another motion. So you have to decide first if you want to do that.
So make a motion to reject the low bid.
Yes.
Okay, that would be my motion.
Is there a second or are there comments?
Is it, uh, Black Strap is at four hundred and thirteen thousand?
Yeah, I'm confused.
So I can, I can speak to this a little bit. In two thousand and seventeen, our annual materials letting had uh, six thousand tons of material. And in two thousand and eighteen, our annual materials letting uh, for this item had four thousand tons of material. So there was a difference in two thousand and tons of material. They used last year's bid proposal in submitting their bid, uh, which I believe is probably cause for rejecting the bid alone. But um, that two thousand tons difference, when you multiply that out uh, with their unit price, uh, causes them to have a much higher uh, total bid, which is what was read at the uh, bid opening. And so that's how we have to report it, what, what was read. Typically, if the people are, if the bidders are using the uh, proposal form that's required with the bid solicitation, uh, we award based off the unit price. So we extend that unit price based on our estimated quantity. And then that gives us a total, total price and that's how we evaluate the bids. Uh, because they used the old bid form and it was multiplied out on their bid form, when it was read, it included six thousand tons of material, not four thousand tons.
So fifty percent more.
The, the uh, actual unit price that they quoted was sixty-eight dollars and ninety cents per ton. Uh, the Nebraska Salt and Grain, which is the second low bidder as read, or was the low bidder as read, uh, was sixty-nine dollars and thirteen cents. And so that uh, multiplied out four thousand tons is a difference of nine hundred and twenty dollars. And so we had issues with uh, the, the bidder, uh, Black Strap being responsive or non-responsive due to the uh, incorrect bid form being used. And then we've also, they've been our, our vendor over the last twelve months and we've had some performance issues as well. So, um, we are recommending rejecting that bid and using uh, Nebraska Salt and Grain Company for 2018.
Question of the State's Attorney, are, is the State's Attorney comfortable with uh, this procedure to reject Black Strap?
Uh, Commissioner, yes. Uh, we, um, in addition to the non-responsive, uh, the second part, uh, which is in uh, Mr. Booth's memo, is um, the non-responsible portion and, and uh, perhaps uh, yeah, if there's any questions in furtherance, um, of Mr. Booth on, as to that non-res- uh, non-responsible nature of the rejection of the bid, um, you should ask those now, but those were also provided to you.
I'd make a motion to uh, reject the Black, Black Strap bid as being non-responsive.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair. Um, and so the bid, the motion, just so that there's clarification, um, there is also a request of non-responsive but not responsible. So there's two portions that Mr. Booth is asking for the rejection of the low bidder. So it's not just the responsive nature of using the wrong form, the bid form, um, but it's the responsible nature, uh, based upon the experience that Mr. Booth has outlined, um, of the difficulties uh, with that individual being non-responsive.
I would amend my motion to include non-responsive.
Not responsible for the reasons set forth by Department Head Booth. I have a motion and second. Any additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. And now I need a motion to accept Nebraska Salt and Grain for the Rock Salt and Transportation.
That's my motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And with that, we'll move on to liaison reports. We're going to start with a presentation from Dr. Snell. He has a meeting in a few minutes and so he's going to be extremely brief with his presentation. And we apologize for the time crunch that we ended up with. Um, we don't get to see you very often and now we're going to almost push you out the door, so.
That's all right. And I don't have visuals, which is going to be a little bit of an issue. Um, oh, maybe we do. So while she's working on that, um, there's a couple of Commissioners I really haven't had a chance to interact with in the past. Um, our office, the, is set by State Statues, Chapters twenty-three, fourteen, and eighteen. Really defines what the coroner's supposed to be investigating. Um, it, interesting in that, that the law, which is a lot of people misunderstand, is it does not require us to perform autopsies. It requires us to investigate cases. Uh, so routinely, that's what we get, they say, well, the law requires you to do this. No, it doesn't. It simply requires us to investigate those deaths. Leaves the decision for autopsy up to myself, the sheriff, or the State's Attorney. Um, and that's pretty much it. Uh, family can ask for one, but we go from there. Cases that it really tells us that we should be involved with are those that are non-natural, which means they're accidents, homicides, suicides, or it's undetermined. Um, all deaths where the identity of the individual is not known. Maybe initially we don't know them, but then we figure out who they are. Deaths in a state correctional facility, uh, mental institution, or special schools. The caveat we run into there sometimes is some of those schools are not ran by the state or government. They're privately run, so those don't fall under our jurisdiction. Uh, however, if they have no reason to be dead, then they fall under our jurisdiction. So it's kind of a, a tricky situation. The caveat with that is, is if you're in a private institution and you make it to the hospital and you die, you wouldn't fall to us because you didn't originate in a, um, in a state facility. Okay. Okay. Um, well, I skipped one, double-jumped. Nope, we're going backwards. There we go. Uh, all deaths that present a public health hazard, this is usually your infectious disease cases, so we would get involved in those. And then deaths of children under the year, under the age of two years old. Again, the caveat comes there is we're not required to autopsy those. Uh, we're only required to investigate those. So we get into uh, issues there with uh, people individually every once in a while. Uh, one thing that's old in this is it still uses the term SIDS. Uh, in the seven years I've been here, I've had two SIDS cases. We have strict definitions for SIDS, uh, which come about since the law was written. And so now the only way you can be SIDS is if everything is totally negative. You have a perfect sleep environment, which is about eighty percent of our infant deaths are in an unsafe sleep position or sleep environment. Uh, we are trying to hopefully get some educational done with that. And then last but not least is all non-natural, I mean, all natural deaths that occur outside of a medical facility. One little caveat to the law is, is I as the coroner cannot autopsy, order an autopsy in those cases. It does not give me the authority to autopsy if I think you died of a natural death and you died outside of a care facility, I do not have the legal authority to order that autopsy. So what we say is if there's not a good reason for you to be dead, it's an undetermined which allows us to do that. It is a fine line. I know some county commissioners, county coroners, and sheriff's offices argue on a regular basis about that because it is a cost. Uh, so fortunately, we get around that. Looking at our 2017 data, um, we had five hundred and sixty-two phone calls that came in. In sixteen, there was five hundred and four. We accepted of that three hundred and ninety-four compared to three seventy-one from sixteen. Uh, here in our county, uh, we had a hundred and twenty-four exams, which was either a full autopsy or an external, which means we brought that body in to the facility to look at. That's down a little bit from sixteen. There were actually sixty-nine autopsies with fifty-five externals. Those numbers are again slightly down from sixteen. Non-vus are those cases where we get the phone call, we accept it, means I'm going to do the death to it, but we don't bring it into the facility to look at. Which means either you died at the hospital and we know why you died and it's a non-natural, say, traffic, or you die at home and we feel that you have a sufficient medical history to evaluate and say you died from that. Again, with the caveat that I couldn't order that autopsy if I wanted to by state law. So those are those non-vus. That is up from the previous year. Another little caveat's what we call a DC kickback. This is where a medical facility does not This is where a medical facility does not notify us of the death that by law they should have notified us, and by law, I'm required to do that death certificate. Um, this number's pretty stable. As you can see, in sixteen, it was fifty-five. So this is a, uh, basically a failure of the medical facilities in this community. We've done a lot of education with Sanford. Sanford is down to only like three or four a year. Avera refuses education, refuses to participate, and so the vast majority of that fifty-five come out of Avera. Um, going forward, uh, looking at, uh, costs associated with our place, uh, there is some increase in toxicology coming. Uh, they did guarantee me, um, we're trying to work on the paperwork, eighteen would stay stable. Uh, there is an increase in eighteen, but they said if I'll sign this paperwork, they won't make me pay it, which is good. But there is another cost increase coming in nineteen, and I don't know what that is. And we're trying to get them to give us that data before we do our budget. So we should expect a decent little jump in toxicology cost there. Another toxicology is that alcohol testing. So if there's an event, we only want alcohol, such as a traffic. We routinely send those to the state of South Dakota. Those were thirty-five bucks. They went from a two-week turnaround to an eight-week turnaround time. That is too long for me to sit on a report. I try to sign out my reports within thirty days. Law enforcement's waiting on that report, uh, death certificates are waiting on that report. So I have had to change my toxicology for alcohol-only to my major company. That's a shift increase of fifteen dollars per case. Uh, we do, once a month, send something to the state to see if they've gotten better. They're still sitting around the five-week turnaround time. So they have not gotten us back to where we can go back to using them. There's another cost increase, unfortunately. Uh, the viral panel, the state changed this panel. The good thing is, instead of waiting a month for the answer, I get it in about, uh, thirty-six hours. The problem is, is it now is a little over two hundred bucks, when it was like fifty bucks before. But they changed it across the state. So even the hospitals that use that panel don't have a choice. So there's good and bad to that, but it is a cost that we got. Uh, another interesting thing is we've been hoping that we would get a portable x-ray unit for our mass fatality unit, which we could also use in the morgue. I did get word, uh, towards the end of last week that the Homeland Security grant for that did come through. If nothing changes, we should get everything and hopefully get that unit by the end of the year. The problem with that, though, is, is that we have been asked, uh, Sanford Health Pathology's been asked to cover the annual maintenance fee, which means that any cost savings that would have appeared have been eliminated. So there will be, at this moment, no cost savings for having this x-ray unit, um, which is not kind of what we had anticipated. Um, looking at our cases, uh, those that we accepted in two thousand and seventeen, uh, as you can see, there were eight that were undetermined. Uh, there were thirty-five naturals, twenty-seven accidentals, non-traffic, with eleven accidental traffics. So combined, there is thirty-eight there, which is our greatest majority is accidental deaths. Suicide's making thirty-five essentially equal to our naturals, and then we had eight homicides. Actually, that should be nine, because there was one that we actually had to send to Rapid City when I was out of town. So that number actually should read as nine. Continuing forward, our top four natural deaths for the county, uh, atherosclerotic cardiovascular disease, a heart disease. Next is chronic alcohol abuse. Uh, that one is our next one, followed by cardiovascular other. Uh, these are like, uh, aortic aneurysms that rupture, something along that line. And then last is respiratory. So these most likely are pneumonias associated with that. Uh, going on to our accidental deaths, drug toxicity was our number one accidental. Uh, we had fourteen of those. Motor vehicle crash drivers was next, followed by passengers. And then asphyxial deaths, that these are either mechanical or positional, which means the body's in a position where it can't, is not allowed to breathe, uh, and dies as a result of that. Um, the big one everybody wants to know is about drugs. Uh, and what have we seen? Which is interesting, if you look at our numbers, we really didn't have a single opioid death, if we don't include heroin, in two thousand and seventeen. There was one death that did have some codeine present, but it was mixed in with methamphetamine. We think it was a, uh, something that cut the methamphetamine with was codeine. But we had seven cases that had heroin on board, which is a huge number, more than we've seen at any time. Our bump in the opiates and oxycodone, again excluding heroin, really was in the fourteen, fifteen years. Uh, if you look over, it says combined, there was in fourteen, five cases that were combined. I really don't go into those. Fentanyl was the other big one. We had a big bump, really starting in fourteen, that continued into fifteen. Uh, and in sixteen, we also saw an additional three, total of three cases there involved in that. So fentanyl was pretty good, but it dropped off last year in seventeen. So we are not seeing, I don't feel, the same thing that the Ohio and eastward is seeing here. We are working with the sheriff's department, trying to gather more information on these. Actually, I have an agreement now with Sanford where I review all of their opioid drug, uh, positivities each week. And if any of those are a drug overdose, that goes to the sheriff's office for him to put in the national database. We're hoping, once we get this up and running fully, we can add Avera into this system. But right now, my medical record connection with Avera has been down since October, and they cannot figure out how to fix it. So right now, I don't have access to medical records from Avera, which has limited me in doing this project. Our suicides, uh, if you remember back in the spring, we actually met and had a, a press conference about the bump in suicides. Unfortunately, we finished the year pretty high. Drug, uh, gunshot wounds were our number one, followed by hangings. And then, as you can see, there was a smattering of other types mixed in with that. But gunshot wounds were there. Uh, our homicides, uh, not a record year. Uh, sixteen would have been the record year, but again, you can see our breakdown. Sharp force was greater than gunshot wounds or blunt force trauma. We did have the one motor vehicle ca- uh, crash that was involved considered a homicide there. One more slide, and then I'm gonna do some other numbers for you. Looking forward, uh, mass fatalities is our big thing that we're looking forward to. We actually have set up a planning exercise for this coming May, May twenty-first. We have several different groups that are coming together. We're gonna exercise all of our equipment. We're gonna put it through its paces. Uh, we have people from every agency in this county and some of the local states as well coming to play a part of that. Uh, so we're hoping to put all of our equipment. This is not really open to the public. This is really for us to kind of put ourselves through the paces. However, if one of you would like to come, just reach out to me and I'll be happy to extend you the invitation. But this is not open to the public, per se. Uh, the equipment I put in, putting in the portable x-ray unit, again, uh, we did, we're hoping to get it by the end of the year, but any cost savings has been offset by maintenance fee. Something that I did wanna add, uh, address is what is our numbers looking like this year? Those of you probably have seen the, uh, January and February numbers. Uh, January, our autopsies were down a little bit. Uh, our, um, exams totals were down a little bit, both in January and in February. But we're right on target when we look at the average for a seven-year average. So if we're looking at that seven-year average, we're fine there. Homicides were actually above last year, but we're on pace for two thousand and sixteen, which was the big year that we experienced. When we look at our non-vues, those cases that we don't bring in, we are above average on that. So again, we're trying to shift more cases instead of bringing them in to not bringing them in, so it saves money. But we always are open that if we feel there's a reason to bring it in, we do. And our consults, these are the cases that we get phone calls on, but we decline those, and we're above average, um, on those, which means there's more cases being called in asking, should we accept those or not? Which is good. I'd rather that than have a DC kickback. So I'd rather have a large number of consults. Um, so in a nutshell, that's it. Our numbers are pretty good compared to last year. January was bad, but February's been okay. March is actually still, is a little better. I think March is getting back to our normal levels here. Um, so I think two thousand and eighteen will be on par for two thousand and seventeen. I think two thousand and sixteen's still gonna be a peak year for us, so we're gonna be down a little bit. But we are above the eleven to fifteen average. So we are above that. Um, I think that's it. We have been in contact and working with the hospital to see about expanding the storage facility. But unfortunately, my footprint in the hospital is landlocked. Uh, I cannot expand that, and I am very old there, space list of places that get spaces. Uh, and especially anytime they build something new, nobody wants a morgue in there. So, uh, I don't know when or if we will ever get additional storage. The reason I bring that up to you is that is a cost. Every time I can't store a body in our facility, I have to ship it to an outside facility, and I have to pay for that. So that is a cost to us. Um, but until Sanford's willing to expand that, uh, storage facility, you know, there's not much we can do about that. Uh, and I am required by hospital to leave one space open at all time for them, because it is their facility. So unfortunately, that means sometimes our cases get bumped out. We always do bump out outside twenty cases that the hospital takes on. Our county gets priority over those. So we don't jeopardize this county at a cost for an out-of-county issue there. Having said all that, I know it was really quick, tried to put a lot of, uh, speed to that, and I appreciate y'all willing to let me sneak in today. It's a crazy week for me, but, um, I appreciate y'all letting me come in. Any questions, especially from our two new Commissioners that I haven't really a chance to interact with in the past?
Questions?
You know, I, I understand that you're, um, you're a Sanford employee. And I'm just curious what, there are several, you made several allusions to the relationship between the hospitals, and I, I'm curious how much outreach you do with the other hospital and how, how, what kind of work there is to make sure that we're adequately representing the entire medical, um, world here in our county.
Uh, first off, I lecture at both hospitals, both EMT, uh, paramedic programs equally. Um, the, and I lecture actually at both nursing training courses every year, when they put on their continuing education for nurses. I lecture at both hospitals for that. When it comes to trying to make improvements, um, let's say my efforts at Avera were received for the first year, and since then, anytime I have a suggestion to make things better, I have to go to medical records. Nursing administration, hospital administration did not want to talk to me. Uh, and I, at one time, got to interact with nursing administration, trying to fix things, and they slowly relegate, over a period of one year, relegated to me that now all my complaints go to medical records. I don't know how medical records are supposed to reduce the DC kickbacks, because they get records after the fact. Avera is not interested in trying to improve these areas, based on my experience with them in the seven years I've been here. Um, but I do equally educate when I'm invited to both institutions. Uh, I think it's just simply because I am a Sanford staff. Sanford's a little bit more interested in working with me.
Okay, well, maybe we can work on that a little bit.
I was gonna say, maybe we can work on that. Maybe there's some help on this side.
Well, I'll tell you this, that even my predecessor had the same roadblock. He even went so far as to get an attorney general's opinion on the law. Presented that to the administration of Avera, didn't care. I presented that same opinion when I got here my first year, that same exact opinion to their administration. They didn't care.
You also referenced some, um, technology challenges that you're having between the two hospitals, and it sounded like that had been a, uh, an issue for quite some time. Is there a plan to get that fixed?
It's up to Avera to fix it. Uh, we have done everything on the Sanford side. RIT has worked with RIT, and RIT says they can't fix it, and we have no timetable as to when they're gonna try to fix it.
Conversations we need to have. Commissioner Barth, Commissioner Barth.
I, I sure do appreciate you being, uh, here and, uh, working in our community. We are so lucky to have you. Um, I just have a question about people who, uh, you know, are listed as, say, a opioid overdose. You know, when you watch, uh, celebrities passing, it's usually a cocktail of stuff. In other words, they're taking cold medicine and fentanyl or whiskey and, uh, uh, ex- uh, oxycodone. Uh, yeah, it doesn't fall neatly into a category, but, you know, thinking about like an alcohol-related motor vehicle accident, you might have other stuff on board that also, do you check for that stuff?
We do not unless law enforcement asks us. Um, and part of the reason, again, we go back to what is my legal statute, which is cause of manner of death, not figuring out what contributed to an accident. Um, and so I've always felt that it wasn't appropriate to use my budget to answer questions for, uh, other areas of county government. Uh, if we said that we want you to start doing that, and the county commission would approve that increase in budget, then I would be happy to. But I do not unless law enforcement's point-blank says, we're concerned about another drug present other than alcohol. Um, and so those of you that aren't aware of this too, state law requires me in all non-natural deaths to perform some form of toxicology. They don't specify what. So I use an alcohol as to meet that state requirement. So part of our toxicology budget is simply mandated by state law, that we have to do that. But it doesn't tell us what we have to do. So trying to conserve the county's money, I regulate it, I relegate it only to an alcohol. And that comes in, uh, suicides that are not expected to be drug overdoses and traffics, or any kind of accidental death. Being, trying to be a good steward of the county's money, I only do alcohol. You're right. Am I missing cases where there are other drugs on board? I'm sure I am. Uh, and again, it comes down to the dollar. Uh, I'm trying to conserve money for the county at the expense of knowing I'm missing some of those, and it's always a game. Do we want all of those answers? Then we have to pay more money. Uh, and, you know, again, I try real hard not to burden that portion of our budget, um, you know. And again, but again, if law enforcement come to me and said, the last traffic I just had, they said, I ordered alcohol. I get an email from the, a law enforcement officer saying, I'm concerned about an illicit drug in this case. Not a problem. I changed it to, and the nice thing is I have multiple-tiered systems in my toxicology company. I can bump it from alcohol to just one level, and it picks up all the illegal drugs. Now, I'm not looking at prescription medicines, but illegal drugs. Now, it does not pick up the new fancy designer opioids, designer fentinels and all, it doesn't get into that. That's a totally different panel. But I can do that without a huge bump. But it is, you're talking sixty dollars to a hundred and fifty. So that was a ninety-dollar bump, because law enforcement said, we think there's an illegal drug here. I'll do it, but not on a regular basis. Again, ninety dollars is ninety dollars, if I can save it, you know, so.
Additional questions? Commissioner Benega?
Dr. Snell, do you keep track of the requests that you get from, like, the state's attorney versus the law enforcement versus what you feel needs to be done on an annual basis? On the number of cases you process?
What I'll say is, is, um, not in this county, we don't, because, um, there, I've always taken the philosophy that if the law enforcement asks me to do something, I'll do it.
Sure.
Um, in other areas that I serve, we do make a distinction between the coroner and law enforcement and state's attorney, uh, because there are cases in those counties where the coroner doesn't want it, but law enforcement or the state's attorney does. And my seven years here, I think there's only been a couple of times where I've said no, and I've told law enforcement, if you want it, go ask the state's attorney. And I've yet to date had the state's attorney call me and say, do it. He's not done it yet to me.
Okay.
So I would say right now, he pretty much leaves it up to me, uh, but there's always the first time.
Sure.
Now, there are times, like I said, where I say, I don't need it, and law enforcement said, we really want you to do it? Okay, fine, I'm not gonna argue with you, you know, and I'll do it. Um, but that's not very common, to be honest with you. Maybe once or twice a year.
Just curious.
Um, he mentioned the mass casualties, which is a training exercise for the professional side of this. But if you do have time, um, I went to it, and I believe Commissioner Barth might have gone too, when it was offered about four or five years ago. And it was, it was very eye-opening, and, and, um, he wouldn't be in the middle of their training. He just kind of takes you through on the side time when it's just set up. So you can see what type of equipment we have and what type of stuff they do. So if you do have time to make an appointment with them, I think it's well worth your time, so. And I would thank you very much for coming, and, and we made you late.
That's all right.
Thank you for coming.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on with any other liaison reports.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
Um, we had a meeting of the Intergovernmental Board on the Multicultural Center. Commissioner Karski and I were there, and, uh, the mayor was not, by the way. I thought maybe it'd be the last time I got to give him a sharp elbow. But, um, it looks like things are going really well over there. They had a list of accomplishments. Uh, certainly, they're doing better than when I was on their board. And, uh, I would also say, uh, at, it's not a liaison assignment, but at Democratic Forum, which I attended last Friday, uh, Commissioner Karski and I both went, and Sheriff Milstead gave a great, uh, presentation on the Triage Center. And, uh, Scott, uh, and SouthDakota.com has posted a video that, um, Bruce Danielson took of the full presentation of Sheriff Milstead, although he misspelled Milstead.
Any other liaison reports? I have a short list. Commissioner Benega?
Uh, before I left on vacation, the, uh, I had the opportunity to go to Metro Management, and Jeff was there also. And, uh, last year's budget came within just a hair of their projections. It was so incredibly close, it was unbelievable. Um, and then this year, they're pretty much right on schedule also. So those were good items to review, and the mayor was there.
Was, but you were in between me and him.
Oh, well, that's probably a good thing, too.
Couple things. I'm sitting on the, uh, Board of Directors for, um, our South Dakota Association. One of the questions that was posed to me to bring to you was, um, the board discussed, while I was gone, about moving the spring workshop for South Dakota Association of County Commissioners to every other year. Um, and so I was supposed to take it back to all the different Commissions and figure, see what your thoughts are. Uh, usually, it's kind of training for new Commissioners, and it's a lot of repetitive stuff. And so, um, hopefully, the attendance would be higher if we would do it every other year instead of every year. So thoughts from this commission? They said that they had some positive, um, feedback, and they've also had some Commissioners that were not interested in going to only every other year, so I'm asking your opinion.
I've already told you, Cindy, but I think every other year, it'd be great. Uh, doing it the year following the general election, uh, makes, uh, perfect sense. So while we'll have one again next year, uh, then we could skip the next year after that.
Any additional thoughts?
I agree. When you've got them twice a year, I mean, you still have one time a year that you have an opportunity. that you have an opportunity to get together. I think that makes a lot of sense. I don't know how it affects the budget. I know that there, you know, there is a lot of vendors that come into those, but from a Commissioner's standpoint alone, I think that makes a lot of sense.
And I will tell you that they, it is scheduled out for already March because of contracts that have been signed and stuff. So there will be another one this next March. The thing is, it's right after the legislative session, and so it's just a lot of scrambling to get it going. And we also have our district meeting about that same time. So there's a lot of doubling up of time that we've already spent together. So I will pass that on, that we're in support of every other year. This week, this last week, we had the Mental Health Conference, or Summit, was held over at Augustana, put on by our staff. I would just tell you, it was excellent. A couple of us were there for short times. I was there for all of it. I believe that they will have some follow-up material if you are interested in hearing some of their presentations. I was going to talk about a whole bunch of stuff, but I will not, just in respect of our time. One thing I'd mention is, I mean, we had great speakers from all over the United States, and, but our data collection is done by Augustana, and I wrote down a few different data things. But I'll just point out, one of them was 25.6% of our bookings, which is about 638 people, have five or more bookings each per year. At 100 beds per day, that's $3.5 million. That's one of the issues that our Triage Center is working towards trying to improve. So there's a lot of good information. I think we'll be hearing more about it, even in the commission meetings or from staff, so just to make you aware of that. I did attend a chamber meeting this last week. They have changed a lot of things since I was on the chamber two years ago, doing presentations now, which are a little bit different than before. I thought they were really good. We had a report on Pheasant Fest, which was, I'm sure you heard, highly successful. They had approximately 29,000 people attend that. A lot of really good information about that. Also, the school districts gave a report on, they're looking at additional needed space, and that was also very good. I'll tell you, too, that I was accepted to go to the Justice and Peer Exchange the end of April in South Carolina. NICO will be paying, or that organization that's doing it will be paying for that travel expense. And also Erin Surtzka was accepted to go and do some work on justice. So, Commissioner Bender.
I just, you know, tack on to the comment about the Mental Health Summit. I was able to be there just for the evening, part of the, most of the evening session. But it was, it was very impressive. It was impressive to see the number of people that were there, representing lots of different disciplines within the community. And I also understand that Augustana basically provided the facility free of charge, which was, I greatly appreciated. I thought it was a great facility for the, for that group.
Madam Chair, I should also remark, I was at the Towns and Township Meeting last night, and one of the sort of triumphs that they referenced was the 1178, or whatever it is, 1078? The one that allows the townships to make contributions. And the ambulance issue was certainly an item of discussion, along with trees along remote roadways.
Any other liaison reports? Okay, with that, we have new business, and I think Diane has something for us.
Diane Rekma, Equalization Office. So it's that time of year again. County Board of Equalization starts next Tuesday. Today is the last day to appeal. So I'll be sending out a memo in the next few days, letting you know how we turn out. So far, it's pretty light. We have maybe a half a day, but our last day tends to be busy, too, so we'll see what we end up with. Next Tuesday, we're going to go through the handbook of exempts. We have about 68 exempts. I'm going to leave these for you, and we will be going through that next Tuesday. I have went through them with Maggie from the state's attorney's office, so we will see you then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Diane. Any other new business? Any old business? I looked for a motion and did executive session for the purpose of South Dakota qualified law, 1-25-2, Sections 1 and 3.
That's my motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor of Reese, I always get this wrong, not Reese's. Adjournment into executive session. Same sign, motion passes unanimously.